Please rise for your pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please take role.
Commissioner Schmansky.
Here.
Commissioner Yoder.
Here.
Commissioner Weiner is absent. Commissioner Member Two.
Here, but I have to say something. I have to step out briefly to go pick up my daughter. She had an injury at the track meet and then I'll come right back.
Okay, sorry. Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Vice Chair Slavinsky?
Here.
And Chair Whitliff?
Here, thank you. Approval of agenda. At this time, the planning commission can take action to approve the September 5th, 2024 agenda. Is there a motion?
I'll make it.
Motion by Shelley, second by Mick. Discussion? None, please take role.
Commissioner Schmansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Commissioner Member Two?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Vice Chair Slavinsky?
Yes.
And Chair Whitliff?
Yes, thank you. Conflict of interest? This time, the chair will ask if there's any conflicts with the agenda this evening. If so, please state it. None? Okay, thank you. Approval of minutes. At this time, the planning commission can approve the August 1st, 2024 meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
I make a motion.
Motion by Bob, second?
I'll second.
By Roger. Discussion? None, please take role.
Commissioner Schmansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Vice Chair Slavinsky?
Yes.
And Chair Whitliff?
Yes. Thank you. Correspondents? We have none? Correct, okay. Presentations. Mr. Tom Herndon, Fire Chief, City of Manistee.
I'm in visitor drive.
Okay.
Younger visitor. And then presentations 2024. Believe I'm just at the bottom there. Thank you.
Do you need clicker?
Good evening. Yeah, thanks for the invite. Looking forward to opportunity to tell you about the Manistee Fire Department. So, Manistee Fire Department, I just rounded my first year out. I started last in June, so I have about 15 months in now. And some of the things that we've changed with the Manistee Fire Department is we created a new vision, mission, core values in a patch. And what I wanted to do is I wanted to get all the firefighters together and we really gathered a bunch of ideas on where we want to go in the direction of the fire department and where we're heading in the future. They provided a lot of input as far as the mission and our values of what we're going to stand for with our fire department. And those are what we use as our baseline to guide us in all of our decision making going forward. So, we put these all down on the patch and probably display that in the front of our fire station. So, the chart of the fire department, annual activities and responsibilities. So, in the fire department, we divided it up into three different divisions. We have a prevention division, an EMS division, and a fire division. So, as far as prevention, that involves two main components. The first component would be fire inspections and building type things to keep our buildings safe. And then the second component would be public education, where we would enter the schools and do public education or fire safety education for children. And we also do fire safety education too at the senior center too. So, we try to hit all the different avenues of fire safety education. Also, the next division in our fire department is EMS. The City of Manistee Fire Department is a full ALS transporting ambulance agency. And I'll get into a little bit more of that in due, but we provide an ambulance 24 hours a day, seven days a week here in the City of Manistee. And then we also respond to fire calls too, which those can be anywhere for regular structure fires, car fires, vegetation fires, those types of things. We also have non-fire calls, which those would be of the nature of car accidents, other types of rescue calls. And it could be wires down, natural gas leaks and those types of the things, and those keep us busy. So, so far, year to date, we've ran 845 different responses. The majority of our calls are EMS calls or ambulance type calls. Well, you can see on the graph there, we have about 400 of those and all the other ones taper on down to about 40, 50 calls so far this year. Another breakdown of the different types of calls that we respond to. And that, but, so the main call, 80% of what we do is ambulance or EMS type calls. Here in the City of Manistee and the residents, we are in insurance bill only. So, for all of the residents, if you're a City of Manistee resident, you call for an ambulance. We respond and we only bill your insurance company. There are no out-of-pocket costs for city residents for our ambulance. If we do respond outside of the city limits, we do charge like a regular ambulance. Those bills can be between $850 to $410, somewhere around in there and that. So, out-of-city residents do get billed a full regular ambulance bill. So far, and, well, last year, these are 2023 numbers, we had a total of 856 ambulance responses. That netted a payment of $333,000. So, on average per run, the ambulance is reimbursed by insurance companies for about $400 per call. With that, mutual aid. Mutual aid is a big deal here for our emergency response network in the surrounding townships. So far, year to date, we've used mutual aid 99 times. That represents 11.7% of our call volume. What mutual aid is, is when there's a fire or there's an emergency, a fire, we staff two firefighters on duty 24 hours a day. When there is a fire or a more complex medical call, or even two ambulance calls at once, we call in other agencies to come in and assist us with those calls. We also respond to outside of our agency or outside to, say, Manistee Township or Filer Township and help them when they need additional help and personnel. So, working back and forth over the borders is a large part of what we do, 10% of what we do. So far this year, we gave aid 62 times or 66% of the time, and we received aid from other townships 29% of the time. So, that's a total, that graph there shows the total amount of incidents that we've done it. The majority of our mutual aid goes to mobile medical response, ambulance calls. That runs in line with the EMS calls of the majority of the things we respond to. So, further mutual aid breakdown, the aiding agency. So, when we ask for help, we get help from Filer Township, Manistee, the city police sheriff, Manistee Township, MMR, Onakama, and the United States Coast Guard. And those are the breakdowns of the agencies who have came in and aided us in the city. On the other side, the aided agencies, those are the agencies that we most go out and help and assist. The most common one is MMR. That definitely makes up the majority of our responding outside of the city limits to help other agencies. So, location of our responses, that's basically a cluster map or heat map of all the responses that we've made year to date. As you can see, sometimes we get called quite far away from the City of Manistee boundaries. However, the bulk of our calls, you know, are within our central Manistee area. And that, another breakdown of the different calls that we make inside and outside. So, looking into the future and things that we have going on now at the fire department. Currently, right now, we are going through a national registry process. Right now, the fire station is not on the federal list of historic places. All right? That, to be listed as a historic place on a national level, we have to submit quite a large application. I have some community members helping us. Mark Feder is helping. Fred Lapointe, retired firefighter, and Sarah Herbert from the Manistee Community Foundation are all volunteering their time helping me fill out this paperwork. This is 100 hours of this and they're really doing a great job helping. We actually have a meeting tomorrow and we hope to put in our final draft. So, next year at this time, I hope to tell you that we're on the national registry. We're also doing exterior paint removal and, that's what I say, and brickwork. So, we're removing all the exterior paint from our building and going to be re-tuckpointing it and repainting it, fixing up the exterior rebuilding. We remodel inside bathroom. Currently inside, we're rearranging our offices, I'm moving, creating firefighter offices downstairs. New workout space, exercise place. We got that hose cart donated to us from another Manistee resident who restored that. We're going to be displaying that in our fire department, the front lawn, and looking for new ways to do that. We have tons of visitors that come to the fire station every year and they love looking at the history of our fire station. And that's just another piece that we can use to show them. They really like it. We also implemented high school program where this year we did a cadet program. I'll get into that a little bit more in a few minutes, where we had high school students come there and basically learn the day in the life of a firefighter paramedic for the City of Manistee. Show you a little bit more about that. Then we also have an exciting Great Lakes Burn Camp fundraiser coming up. So, the exterior paint removal and brick repair, this is where we're at so far in the process. You can see on the top right-hand corner, the company that's removing the paint is using a water-based paint remover and power washer. They're essentially power washing the building. They counted up to seven layers of paint is what they're taking off of our building. So, we're getting lighter. So, you can tell the clean spot down on the next picture, the lower left spot, that's kind of a sample of what it's going to look like. It's not the best picture in the world, but once it's clean and they put a conditioner on it and tuck point it, you can look for the exterior of the fire station to look like that. If you put your eyes up to the window, that is a very dark green color. And that, it looks pretty black right now, but when the sun shines on it, it's green. That's going to match the roof, so hopefully by December, let's say, you're going to see your fire station look like that, that the clean part there and that dark green color. And we're really excited to display that. I think it's really going to look sharp. So, our MAPS cadet program, those are our students that came with us and spent the week with us. They learned from skills, firefighting skills, execution skills, but they also did a lot of EMS skills and that. They were basically, they used essentially IV needles into chicken bones and they're drilling things in and figuring out the different types of things, splinting. All of those students right there, they learned how to pick up a 185-pound dummy and drag it and all of them got it and were able to move it. So, it was really impressive. They were all really excited. I believe one of them joined the Manistee Township Fire Department as a cadet. And that, and, you know, helping to build up that resource because the fire and EMS resources are shrinking in our area and that, we really need to plan for that. Because we have generations retiring out of the volunteer fire service and we just don't have the fill of young people coming in there right now. So, that's a big part of just letting young people know about the opportunities there are in our area, state, and really nationally for fire and EMS employment. And last thing, we have the Great Lakes Burn Camp fundraiser. That is actually coming, not this Saturday, but next Saturday, we're going to do that September 14th from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. We're going to be in front of the City Marina. They're on River Street. What we're doing there is we, the Manistee Fire Department, is going to be selling root beer floats. And these root beer floats, all the proceeds that we're doing are going to be going to the Great Lakes Burn Camp. Great Lakes Burn Camp is what started, I'm going to call it, in the 1980s. And that is for children who have burn injuries, suffer burn injuries, and basically they go to camp and they, they're just kids and kids at camp. You know, with the nature of burn injuries, the visual and that, the idea is all these kids that suffer the same type of injuries, they just can be themselves and it's really a great thing. And we're looking forward to that fundraiser and hope to see you out there. Any questions? That's all I got.
I just, I appreciate everything that you and the City of Manistee Fire Department does. Thank you. My father was a firefighter for 40 years through the city, so he spent a lot of time at the firehouse.
My dad was a fireman too. Yeah, all right. Well, thanks a lot. This is a great place to be.
Thank you.
Could I ask one question?
Absolutely.
How many firemen do we have?
Not many.
So, for the City of Manistee, currently right now, we have seven firefighters employed. We have two on per day and that, we have one shift that has a third person, then there's me. So, right now, we staff, our minimum staffing is two firefighters per day.
So, is that enough or do we need more?
So, so call volume is increasing, okay? So, over the years, so I'm going to talk more on like a federal and state level as far as fire responses, which we're following the same. But, so, over the past 20 years, call volume has tripled.
Yeah.
Okay, and a lot of that has to do with run volume or, you know, just aging population, EMS calls and those types of things. And we are following the same pattern of increasing in call volume. And at some point, we are, you know, we do need more personnel to respond. Right now, we do run that ambulance. We average about four ambulance calls a day. All right? Yeah, yeah, we had 1,400 calls last year. We're on same pace for that. So, if you figure four ambulance calls a day, right now, we have a 53-minute round trip time. So, you call an ambulance, by the time the ambulance gets there, we load it up, go to the hospital and then we're back in service. It's a 53-minute circle is what we make on average. So, four calls a day, you know, that's, that's four hours a day that they are specifically on a call. When they are on that call, you know, they're not available for other ones. So, that is increasing and it is really important for us to plan for this increasing call volume and plan for the future. Yeah, for sure. I think the key for us for just a successful community in that would be to look at opportunities to work with the agencies that we do this mutual aid with. Right now, we respond to other areas 10% of the time, okay? I think we should look to build closer relationships so we can share more resources and just have a more robust fire and EMS response network between, on other sides of the borders. By us responding 10% of the time, but really maintaining different agencies and that, I don't think we're taking advantage of some of the efficiencies we could have if we all worked closer together.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Yeah, you do a good job.
Next, Toby Van S., Blade Officer.
Good evening.
Thank you, Tom.
I'll just give you a little bit of my history, where I come from. I was a business owner in Grand Rapids area, probably about 20 years and do residential commercial development at Underground Gas throughout the state of Michigan. And in 1999, I got the call from Township Supervisor to be on a planning commission. By far my favorite job, just want everybody to know that. I love my PC. I did that from 1999 to about 2002 and then was also added to the zoning board of appeals. So, I did both concurrently. 2005, I was elected Township Treasurer, so I gave up the ZBA but stayed on the PC. And 2008, I was elected Township Supervisor, so had to get off the PC at that time. So, that, that one bothered me, so. I was Township Supervisor for 12 years down in Ottawa County, community about 7,500. And I retired in 2020, moved up north, and got bored. Here I am. I applied for the code enforcement from NSD. We started that here probably about six weeks ago. So far, it's going fabulously. We have 28 active addresses right now that we're pursuing. About 14 of them have turned into citations. So, every, every one of those takes time and energy to go through. I try to help Teresa where I can on some zoning stuff. I do, I was also zoning administrator for Townes Township. And so, I tried to, when I'm out and about, do some things, pull some signs, write some letters, do some other things, so. So, that's where we're at. So far, it's been great. It's been pretty, other than the 28 addresses, well-received by the residents. They, from people I talked to on the phone and things, and when I'm out and about, it's been going very well, so. If there's anything I can ever do or if you all see problems in your neighborhoods, please contact me. I work through the police department, so I am there Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday and available to come out and take a look or do what needs to be done. Any questions?
Any questions?
Are you still working with the group that's working with beautification? No, I haven't been introduced to that one yet.
Any questions? Roger?
I was just wondering, are you a part-timer or is this?
I'm a part-timer.
Wow, you've got your hands full for, what, that 20 hours or?
20 hours a week, yep.
Gee, what?
That's what the city was looking for, so.
Yeah. Okay, well, you've got your hands full anyhow.
Yep, yep. There's not much downtime.
Yeah, not much?
Toby, are you, you said about your pulling signs. Is that yard sale signs and everything? Kind of driving me nuts?
When I've been driving around, I've been trying to do some of that. I know it trips into zoning a little bit, but I try to help out where I can.
He's a big asset, very helpful, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, welcome to the City of Manistee.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Public comments on agenda-related items. All comments and handouts from, excuse me, all comments and handouts from the speaker at the podium will go through the chair. Also, there will not be any interaction between podium and audience. These rules cannot be followed. Chair can adjourn this portion of the meeting. Limit is five minutes at the podium. So, anyone?
Anyone, anyone?
All right. New business, currently we have none. Old business, we'll move to 91 Arthur Street, West Side Social. So, Gary?
Yeah.
Arthur Street?
Come on up.
Spoke to him? Person?
Welcome.
I'm obviously not huge.
This is Bridgette Vanderhoff. She's the owner of the project and I'm the contractor. Gary Manor, address 17368 Peninsula Drive, Traverse City, Michigan.
Bridgette Vanderhoff, 19201 North Shore Drive, Grand Haven, Michigan.
Could you go through the plan for us, please?
Do you want me to just talk in general a second?
Go ahead.
Okay, so I bought this property, it's almost been three years ago, and started looking at it and looking at at least 91 Arthur. 99 Arthur didn't come along until a little bit later. And working with the people who own the ship or who, the nonprofit that has the ship, talking with them, talking about what would they like to see next door to them, what would be synergistic with their business and what could we do there? And we started talking about the fact that people that stay there don't have any place to eat, that they can walk to easily. At that time, I think B, something that's down the street, wasn't there. And so, we started talking about, well, it's already a restaurant. It's already, you know, been there. It was a Little Caesar's Pizza. And started talking about, well, what could this look like, also working with them, like when they have their Halloween event or, you know, how could we make this more of a public place to come and play? It's on the water. It's a beautiful piece of property. And so, I started working on design. At one point last year, I had a chef and his wife who wanted to take over the project. I gave them the go-ahead and when it came down to it, they just didn't have the financial wherewithal to pull it off. And so, it kind of went back to square one, which was okay because we are still waiting today for the Army Corps of Engineers to sign off. It has taken me almost, well, better part of a year and a half to get through Eagle. We're finally through them. They wanted very special plantings. They wanted the waterfront to be beautif, you know, a beautification process. There were some wetlands, so native plants that are there that we have to pay attention to. We're finally through their process. They have signed off. The plan for that waterfront area is to put in a few short finger docks. We're dinghies, not boats. We're talking, it's very shallow there, so nobody's going to be able to get in. But picnic boats potentially down the road to be rented, to go out on the lake. What would the property look like? Think about an outside park kind of atmosphere with maybe a couple of fire pits, maybe a single guy playing a guitar type thing where people can go in and eat, come out, listen to a little music, have their dinner, sit around the fireplace, chat, and watch the sunset, sort of. It's, you know, that way. But there's swans on the, on the lake. It's a beautiful piece of property. And so, I'm excited. I'm excited for the restaurant concept. I do have a chef. I'm not allowed to disclose who that is yet, but he is local. And he does a great job. I've eaten his food many times now. So, he'll be coming into, really, he'll be the one there on a day-to-day basis operating. But for those of you who don't know, I'm also involved in a very big project out in Filer Township near the Meyer. I am the developer and builder of the 288 apartment units that were approved. So, I have a lot of faith in Manistee. I love Manistee. I grew up here, spent my childhood here. My grandparents were charter fishermen, so I spent a lot of time going in and out of this channel. Many great memories. And when I retired, I chose Manistee as the place that eventually I'll probably live. Right now, until I get everything going, it's, it's a process. So, that's kind of where it's at. Gary is my builder. He's been working with me through all of the ups and downs and things that we have to go through to get to the point of breaking ground.
Thank you.
And if you could go through the, Gary, go through the project?
I can't. Do you have plans there or do you like me to bring my plans up?
We have the plans here or can't put it?
Marco, can I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead.
Well, just, you have the plans and you're the builder. Have you done something like this before or is this the first for each one of you?
So, my background is a builder.
Of homes or?
No. Commercial, industrial, so some of my clients, I had a basic history. In high school, I started framing houses, pouring concrete, six years pouring concrete, six years framing houses. When I was 24, my uncle decided it was time to get my life in order. I moved to Minnesota. And I worked as a maintenance guy for a year and then I worked as a carpenter for Welsh Construction for a year, two years actually, and then I'd be, went over to the Bainie Group where I became a partner. $36 million a year, commercial contractor, typically Class A buildings downtown Minneapolis and St. Paul. I then left the Bainie Group, started my own firm. And my client base was Caterpillar Global Paving, so I maintained their whole building, putting in overhead trains, total roller footings, all their equipment, redoing their plant. Power System, which is a nuclear handling company. I worked with them on Chernobyl and with Yokushima. I actually designed and built a building with a mock nuclear reactor there so they could practice with this robot that's dismantling both Chernobyl and Yokushima. NASA designed a five-story platform to build rocket ships. Now, understand, I'm an uneducated layman.
It sounds like you know what you're doing, okay. We don't need rocket ships, but, close.
So, wherever I worked was, office tenant improvements, restaurants. We did a lot of things.
Okay.
So, I've been around the Super Bowl.
Okay, good. That's all I asked.
You know, reminiscing, sometimes I can go long, so.
And just so you know, this is also not my first rodeo either. I've built 44 commercial buildings in two states in my previous career. So, I have been there, done it, worked through DEQ, Eagle, all kinds of stuff. I capped sites. I've been where there's been industrial waste. I've worked through, you know, changing zonings, having special meetings, pretty much everything.
Good for you.
Well, we've done a few things.
Yeah.
Currently, I'm building a hotel in Traverse City, so. And I'm a farmer.
Jesus.
Full-time farmer, full-time builder.
I guess.
Usually on the tractor when I call him.
Five kids take a lot of money.
Five children also? My God.
Yeah, just go through the plans for us.
Let's go through the plan.
So, basically, the existing building was the old Little Caesar's building. Many of you stopped in there recently?
Many of you stopped in there recently. Um, I heard a rumor at one time, it's definitely a plant. And it's, it's, I walked in there and say, I'm not sure if the roof is going to stand up, the molding walls. Whoever moved out there just got it. It's, it's, I'm surprised that some of the windiest ones have not gone over. So, basically, we're going in the same, we're using that same footprint, and we're adding on, doubling the size. The total square footage is approximately three thousand square feet, okay?
It's not the best thing.
It's not a, it's not a huge restaurant. It's something that's maintainable. Like, service the community. Sometimes you'll be too large a restaurant, you can't maintain a restaurant. So, the existing building. Where is the shoot here?
Right here.
So the existing building is right here. We're going to be adding this back section onto it, it's basically right here. And the existing building will predominantly become the kitchen area for the new restaurant, okay? And then the other part of addition will be seating, and then on the outside is an outside patio. And it's a one-story building, I think it's, it's maybe thirty feet, maybe thirty-five feet, top of the carpet. It's not a great tall building, so those, it's not, we're not doing two stories or three stories, it's keeping a low profile, um.
And out here is where the stone patio will be, and I'm excited about this, because it's beautiful, blue stone. Where we'll have some tables and chairs for people to take a coffee and go outside. I do have two liquor licenses with this property, I purchased them from the golf course that closed. So I do, um, have those, so we can do some kind of bar kind of service here. Um, I don't know, we haven't decided exactly what that's going to look like yet. Um, but it will be kind of a, it's not meant to be a nighttime bar. This is a restaurant. Um, I suspect we will still have less than ten people. So, um, maybe eleven on the weekends, but I, I, I'm not in the business of opening bars, and I don't want to go there. Um, down here, you can see where the parking is, running along here. This leaves this whole waterfront area. And what we want to do is keep it very natural, I don't want a bunch of plantings in there, I don't want a bunch of cement. Um, sand mixed with some crushed gravel, with paths to walk on, picnic tables. Like I said, a couple of fire pits would be really nice here. Um, in this corner, they're requiring us, the DEQ or Eagle, is requiring us to do this, um, it's a type of, uh, it's a riprap, you're not going to see riprap, you're going to see some beautiful plantings along that, um, area with the flowers, and we've got some native plants we have to put in there, and things like that, so.
This would be a wetland area here, it's very small, it surprises me when I'm on that site, but, what's this, a government investor it's at? His vision was the same, this, the existing campground that was there, that will all be cleared out. There's going to be the main phase of the restaurant, the second phase, and it's the seawall, third phase is getting the site up, so there's multiple phases of projects here. One, to make it feasibly financial, two, get the restaurant, hopefully it will start generating revenue and income in there.
And three, we need permit. We don't have the permit yet to tear into this, but.
When she said that too, typically, Army Corps of Engineers and Eagle release things at the exact same time. And I'm not sure why Army Corps, if somebody was sick or education, would just check into that, but, Army Corps of Engineers will have patterns released over the next few weeks.
But as you know, if you've been down here at all, these docks are all amassed, they're falling in, they're, um, a danger, a hazard. Somebody walks out in there, I just pray people stay off the property right now, because I'm not allowed to tear them out yet until I have those permits. So they're laying there just, and there's nails, and there's, we plant very first, before this is done, we'll get this cleaned up, though. We're not going to leave this. We may not do the build out of the dock, the new docks, but we're going to get this cleaned up first. Because I don't want people coming to the restaurant, kids wandering over there, so.
So it's a simple project, just pick frame building, just slightly cleaned up, it'd be more, the parts like setting when it's done. As you heard, I live in a little Bishop, Peninsula, it's a beautiful place to be, and releasing some stuff, and I think that this project will really, you've got to start somewhere, and then just keep picking up the whole area.
And for a high, is this like a high-end, then, restaurant? Is, is it middle-class, or?
Yes.
I mean, you know, I don't.
Talking breakfast, lunch, dinner.
Bridget's aware that the community has to keep the, has to keep the restaurant open, it's not just for summer tourists.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah, there you go.
Very aware.
Uh-huh.
Worried about that. This, we are, I want all you to come in, uh, on the off-seasons, but I know the tourists, you know, I understand the tourists right here. I'm also an investor in the Hampton Inn Suites.
Oh.
So I've spent quite a bit of time up here in the last few years, um, in watching this. But I, you know, part of, part of when I dug into this was realizing there's no workforce housing here.
Yeah.
Which started me down the path of building, I didn't really want to build apartments, but when I tried to hire for this, and when we're trying to hire for Hampton Inn, nobody can find a place to live. And that's when I went down the path of, well, I already own some apartments in the Iowa County area, um, let's do it here. I, I kind of look at things like, well, just do it, yeah, you're down the road, we're knee-deep, we should write Brian on it in the next thirty days. So I'm excited for that. But that will allow us to also work with the staff that work for me, to say, okay, if you're living in my housing out here, let's talk about how that works, and then helping me promote that, so that we can get people, and young people, to come here, stay here, and live there. And with all of the, um, one of the things I talked about with these little picnic boats, I don't know if you know what, if you know what a dumpy boat is?
Yeah, yeah.
Or a little picnic boat? We would love to have a rental for those.
Yeah.
For all of these tourists coming in, one of the things we get asked at the Hampton Inn is, what do we do when we get there? And this would be a great little thing for them to do. And people that are staying in the ships, they would be able to go out and rent a little boat and tour up the river, and.
Oh. Tour up the river?
Well, a little bit.
Uh-huh, okay.
With a bark.
Yeah, right, okay.
Not until the penny boat, flat.
Uh, yeah, I know, okay, okay, go ahead.
Any other additional questions, or?
Marley?
Can I, Mar, yeah?
Yes, go ahead.
With all the things that you're suggesting putting down in there, will that leave adequate parking? Because I know that's so hard to get in and out of down in there, too.
Bridgette was working with Spicer, and I stuck, took it off, we, we've done the counts, as a builder and contractor, we just need as far as. So, currently, this area is paved. And there's an easement here, there's a drive easement coming across here. And what, phase one, build a building, we're going to straight this as paved here. This is all gravel parking, we're going to continue making this drive. We're putting in the parking around the building. There, we're going to have up to these two handicap spots paved which are here. This will be starting off at first gravel parking, gravel drive, this will pave, so I'm driving. This is more than adequate, uh, parking. If ever it comes a time that, if there's that many more people down here, then Bridget's very happy, the community's very happy, and they should be talking to both people, saying, can we share a parking lot?
And we have talked about that. We've talked about when they have events, could they, you know, how can we partner? And then I talked about that synergy in the beginning, and they did say, you know, we don't use all of our parking in, in the evening. So we can overflow there, we'll allow them to overflow to us when they have their events. But I also do know, you know, people park across the street when they have their big Halloween event, I was just out here for that, I was amazed at how many people were running across that street.
Is there more than double the amount of parking that's there already?
Yes, more than double.
Okay, thank you.
Uh-huh.
So have you looked at porous pavers versus gravel? Because gravel may be an issue with Eagle. Because of ground saturation, that's, that usually becomes a challenge and an issue.
I think ultimately, this is, this is hard paving here, and this is Eagle, and I understand porous paving.
Because there's a, because of other runoff.
Right.
And this is where, you know, right, with the Spicer here, we want runoff, and we're just sweating. So this is all sheet drainage, and that is normal with Eagle and all that. So those drain, this way, we got that, we should say, natural filtration. And one of the porous by twos, paved with wheels, they want the water to go into the ground.
Sure.
Gravel is a typically accepted, uh, porous paper system, because it still allows the water to penetrate the ground, it's a good paper. What happens is, when you pave it completely, now you have the water runoff, and that's where the concentrations grow.
Right, so you have to have some, someplace to capture it.
Yes.
So, so, so when Spicer, when I've got Spicer, make sure that the drainage won't take it towards that wetland, make sure that it's not not controlling.
You mentioned, was it sheet drainage, is that what you said?
Yes.
What is that?
It's grouting, rather than putting in a storm sewer.
Uh-huh.
So typically, a lot of people think big storm sewer, you put all pipes, you catch basins, you van hole covers, take that to the city's, um, storm water system. But since this is the highway up here, I'm not sure if they have a storm water system, but that's actually a highway. Usually when you put, catch basin storm water system there, it's tied into a city system. Other cities, so sheet drainage is that, just like it's always done. And that's why, when the water comes off, because it's great, they go right here. Everything comes out here, draining out, and everything goes drinking like. And then from the highway and everybody else, so all the traffic comes in there, goes drinking like. This, that, basically gets freed and will all go to a filtration. So sheet drainage is sort of a shame.
So on the, on the hill, on the highway, you plan to keep all of the vegetation and everything there, okay?
I'll play you a touch.
Okay. Robert, you have anything?
I can think of. Um, well, it has, have you had, um, and Bob can probably elaborate more, um, drilling's done because that area was a little bit, uh, I think it was a cold dock or something like that?
Actually, actually where the boats are, and the con, and the John's Land Cove used to be slab docks.
And I worked on that project when they did it, and we were putting footings in, and we penetrated the slab docks. Didn't know they were there till the pouring the con.
Well, you worked on the, the, oh, wait.
No, the, the condos, the condos, just next to the con, where the, where the Milwaukee sits. Condos right next door, around there is on top of old slab docks, so there's possibilities of other slab docks in the area of where the campground was.
As you know, I know that there's been four soil borers, one boring was practically right here. There's a boring right here, boring here, and a boring here. This pouring, what they found was they found some peat, some moss, saturated soils, old wood.
Yeah, so that been where the old slab docks were still in that area.
And they found a little bit of rotten tree in the wood, over here by the seawall, uh, mixture of the sand and bone, uh, that, back here. It wasn't the, 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 the clay, better soils, back here, better soils.
Yeah, I can give you an example, on one of the pilings we put in, normally they were two-thirds of a cement. Three of the pilings under the condominiums took four cement trucks to fill the piling. Because the, that was the biggest voids underneath those docks.
The biggest void.
Yes. So, and they put, well, pushed a lot of the peat out of the river, too.
But it doesn't look like you're actually constructing anything in that area, so.
And you're in there.
So everything where you're building is already.
There's something to be aware of in the area, that the, the, the ground is not the most stable, whether you already has borers done, and it's, you've seen some of the stuff that's showing up.
Because I said to Bridgette, you call, boring to be right here, I can do four feet away, by the barrel, right, yeah.
Yep. You just never know what you're going to run into, and, and like you said, you found, they found some of the old wood and stuff in there, and it's, gotta just keep that in the back of your mind.
Well, hopefully that's down to this one word.
Yeah.
Hopefully here, we don't run into.
Pretty much is there already, and it hasn't moved in years, and, but if you do, and eventually you want to develop something farther to the north, that's where you're going to have to keep that in mind.
And I think if, if something, and that's great information, it's really good, that's where, that's where I was first asking you. Right next to the lake, it's going to work the way.
If anything, we're going to go down there and just begin a shed, right, the hotel.
Because the old, there used to be the old Moonlight Motel, used to be down that area. Uh, one set of condos are sitting where it used to be.
It's a beautiful piece of property, I'm excited.
That's the obvious thing, you know, if you were to period out, you're going to create, you're going to, which is very cost-effective.
And along the lake, it'll all be sheet piling, all along, holding everything in?
The existing, the existing fiberglass seawall, Eagle wants to keep that here. We keep that, and then we're bringing in more stone, and we're designing. So, and then on top of that, there'll be initially a sidewalk, or not, that's all, which goes in home, like, discuss with Teresa about future public access.
Or for pictures, if, if you do have renditions or anything, if you could get those to?
Well, we just have what Eagle gave us, this is, this is what we want to see. I don't know if Brian put that in a full print, but he showed me what it's.
Email it to Teresa, and she can get it up to us.
It just shows like, it shows stone, and then plantings, and then more stone, and then more plantings, and that's, but I mean, it's pretty, it's not.
It's a nice, it's a nice reinforcing in there, too.
Yeah, yeah, it'll look really.
The best, the fiberglass is still holding, but fiberglass doesn't turn it into a, by the way.
It degraded sometimes, yeah.
This will be, they had some pillars over in that wetland area, and I'll see that, and, uh, but we'll send Teresa a copy of the Eagle permit. And the drawings that I gave you, the simple drawings, do show that on there, so I made sure that they put that with, see?
Right.
The seawall on those drawings, you guys have another drawings, and I'll send you.
Anything else, Nick?
Uh, you know, I'm, I'm godsmacked that, that you decided out of all the places to come and invest in Manistee. So, thank you very much for, especially, you know, again, recognizing our need for workforce housing, for, for us to continue to have a vibrant community, we need places for our workforce to, to live and play in an environment that they can afford. And, and this, again, is just kind of like icing on the cake, as far as I'm concerned, but.
I can't wait to share.
So, uh.
I have about, almost thirty acres in my control in the city.
Awesome.
So I'm excited to keep working on project after project, this is my thing, I mean, try to retire, and do so long, so.
Doesn't happen.
No, it doesn't, no. But this is fun stuff now, right? It's not a have to work and do this, this is fun stuff. But it has to be smart stuff, and honestly, when people ask me why Manistee, you know what I tell them? It's the best kept secret in the lake shore. And the big voters, you guys have an amazing waterfront. You have the ability, I think, to make Manistee, I mean, I talk to my friends about it. We're all voters, we would run past here, and I feel like, who's going to want to see? Well, there really is nothing to do. Well, let's make something to do, right? And I think you'll see, you'll start getting, I think, Bay Harbor, I hate going up to Bay Harbor, but that's where we all own, because that's where everybody hangs out, because there's a beautiful marina there, and there's things to do. Um, if we create that same atmosphere here, you'll get even more of the boat community coming in to do things, and the people that are staying at hotels will want to come back. Um, I don't know if you've all heard, but that hotel is doing, it's really doing well. And we're excited about it as, as investors in the city.
Just wait till the Asians and Europeans catch on, and, and it won't be long, it won't be long. I have, I lived in Europe for a long time, and Asia for a long time.
But you don't.
And once they find vacations like Manistee, they're going to be here.
It's the best kept secret in the lake shore.
Oh, no, it's not.
Luddington, I just spent the weekend in Luddington last weekend, went to Styx, you guys need a Styx here. You need something like that, you need, you know, we, we docked, we walked downtown, there's tons to do. There's a live, there's like music, plenty of places to go. I think Manistee can be that, and it's Luddington goes north and Traverse City goes south. The only choice is Manistee. So hopefully I made the right request.
Yeah, thank you.
Just, uh, off, off the, uh, question for you, though, Bridgette, is, how many doors, because you're investing in, in workforce housing, how many doors short are we per year?
You are five hundred and twenty-five doors short rental housing. You are over fifteen hundred doors short, uh, with regular housing, so you're a thousand, um, regular doors, and rental doors, you're five hundred and twenty-five. And I had my own personal study done outside of, um, Michigan, um, north, is that, yeah. Um, they did their own study, but I, that, my bank wouldn't accept that, so I had to go back, and, and I wouldn't accept it, I had to do my own. And so I hired a company out of, um, out of Schaumburg, Illinois, didn't know Manistee. They came in and did their own independent, complete study, and they one-hundred percent agree. This is what. This is what you need to do. And it's workforce housing and I'm working with the bank to, you know, get the doors down as far as we can so that it's affordable, but construction's expensive. And, um, I own some of their apartments that are south of here, so I understand the concept. And I have my own apartment management company, so, um, which happens to be my brother and sister-in-law, other family members that run that piece. So we're, it's a, it's very much a family business and I'm very much doing something that I've never done. So it's kinda fun, we'll see how it goes.
Thank you for that.
I would be amazed who in Minneapolis, because the apartment build is oversaturated. Saturation lasts for about six months, it's, oh shoot, we're still short. It hasn't stopped in fifteen years.
We're not even, even with my project and the other project that's out there, we're not halfway to even knowing that you're short.
Jesus, man.
So that, what, fifteen hundred roughly, is that over a period of, is that per year or is that?
I believe the number, shoot, I wish I had brought this, but I believe when I did my study done, they told me that Manistee could add four hundred and twenty-five doors per year for the next seven years and that makes up.
Really?
And you're not getting that. You're not getting half of that.
No, we're not getting any to speak of.
Right. Right. So I think that's, which is sad because I came up here and all, I love Manistee National. You have some great, beautiful, beautiful waters, golfers here and things to do, the water. Even Traverse City doesn't have a thing where you can boat downtown. You gotta park across the street and try to run across the highway to get to a restaurant. You guys have a gem here that I think can be developed and done right with, you know, the master plan. I think, um, like the sky's the limit.
Well, we can't wait till you're residents so that you can join.
Oh, no, I know, that's, sorry. No, no, no.
I'm on the board of the council on aging at the Ringer Center.
There we go.
And we need the housing desperately. And many years ago, like maybe eight, ten years, we had, uh, cruise ships that would come in. They stopped coming because people didn't wanna get out the boat, there was nothing to do. And, you know, we're, we're ripe, this city, to have more.
Well, I met, I met with the cruise ship companies. I have met with them. And because I own the piece of property that had the deepest dock here, that is an option down the road. And they agreed, Manistee would be a great stop for the cruise ships.
Maybe we could originally do a trolley for downtown. Cruise ships and trolley in downtown.
I, it was fun to meet with them and hear what they were looking for. Manistee's not ready yet because you've gotta have more things to do here before those ships will come in. But I have the dock, right? And they agreed, it's a great port. You guys, you keep it dry because you've got the freighters coming in. I met with, they were out of Detroit and it was also with your, with the tourism group, we all met. And they actually came to Manistee with me and spent a day here and toured around and looked at the property that I have and where everything sits. And they were, keep, keep in touch with us, we'll watch it grow. And when you're ready, that's an absolute option because you have the water to use.
Now you gotta use your influence to get the trains out of downtown.
Oh. Love, love, love that. I don't have any influence.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions from the committee, committee? Any?
No, I assume I got all your permits from the city, right? You didn't have any problem with water and sewer out there?
We're using the existing water, existing sewer, the block size there. We'll just cut them off and then reconnect it when we redo the plumbing. So that, as soon as Teresa gets the go-ahead from you guys, show me where they start permits. I think I owe you a hundred dollars, but.
I know you're good for it, so.
You're welcome.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
One follow-up, I saw some timeframes on here, um, when do you expect to open?
That's on you.
We're still working with some other agencies in, in the city here, but I think all that should wrap up about for the second. Yeah, so we are three brothers, locals, we do our explanation.
Yeah.
And if we turn the dirt in October, we'll be opening up that screen for the summer.
Really?
That's my goal, I don't wanna open in July. The hotel got pushed back and it hurt us, so maybe. I would love a soft opening in April, hard opening in May.
So we'll just build fires for camp for temporary use.
You're by the water, it's fine.
Where do you plan on getting the bodies to work there? That's what I can't figure, all these restaurants coming in, where are they getting the people to work?
That's the struggle, that's why you need housing.
That's what I'm saying, yeah. I don't know if it'd be better to build apartments first and get them in here and then build the restaurants or?
Even in Traverse City, we're gonna build a hotel.
Yeah.
Two challenges I see in Traverse City. From Traverse City, I've been working there, working there, raising Traverse City since I was six months old. Moved to Minneapolis. I came back to Traverse City and everything costs double what it costs from Grand Rapids to Detroit. It takes three times as long to get done. Doesn't mean it's still volatile, but it costs double and three times the length. So I've got a hotel to go up from downstate, from Chicago, Illinois, come up, Detroit, Grand Rapids. I bring as many local people as I possibly can. But when you guys come out of Chicago themselves, at half the price, and I've done a hundred hotels, can use those people.
Oh, yeah.
But then what happens in the city there is that those people all need housing. And they can make traffic backwards and especially in Traverse City, that's three hundred fifty dollars worth of hotels. They put that to bid and they can still be the Traverse City contractors by tremendous amounts.
Yeah.
It's a matter of feeding in and working hard and fast. So.
But I think he's talking about their restaurant.
I have a plumber, he's, he lives between Traverse City and, and Betsy. So he's gonna be a local guy, electrician. He's, um, looking at two different guys to see who I'm gonna use, make sure we're all covered. One's a Traverse City contractor, friend of mine, middle one. They're branching out, they started Bay City, but they've got a new guy they're working with that he's been, he's all excited. He wants us, cause he wants to take the Manistee, E.T. Elektra. They started Bay City, moving to Traverse City, he's a young guy, twenty-eight, thirty-two years old, early. He's got the control up there and he, he sees the Manistee, Traverse City, Manistee, he wants to take that control there. So these people, you do have young people that wanna work.
Oh, yeah, okay.
More mechanical, I've talked with another New York order mechanical, which is a part of our town here. We need to be firm with them, between those two guys and make sure.
Yeah.
Design. We're trying, we try to use local people, Roarkski, why? Knows the area.
Roarkski, yeah.
He's also doing the apartments for me.
Yeah.
Great guys and we're, same thing with the apartments. The builder is Orion Construction out of Grand Rapids, but he's looking for local.
Yeah.
And I, I pushed that really hard when we were going to do the process, the bid process, because I had four bids from four different contractors that I went through. And at the end of the day, they, one of the positives of going with Orion is they weren't locked into their people. Their subs, he's like, you know what, if you see a sub that you wanna use that's over here, it's always gonna be the same. So he was great to work with with that because we do wanna build this kind of.
Yeah, well, I understood, yeah.
There's a difference between Luddington and Manistee, so far he's the, the most competitive price in total. So, but you're a hundred percent right, workers can't afford to live. House that's four hundred thousand, it should be two hundred thousand.
Yeah, right. Yeah, wish all the luck, it looks, it looks like it's gonna be a good deal.
I hope to see you all down there, having breakfast or mimosas or.
Exactly.
Roger, you can be the.
Battle voting.
Yeah, yeah.
Battle, Bridget. Roger's gonna be your bartender.
All right. I will not be a bartender or a bartender. But I may be there working, we'll see.
There you go.
Thank you.
Anything from the city office?
Yep, if you don't mind, I have a few things, if you don't mind, could you bring that up for me? So I've got a, um, site plan review checklist and my commissioners have that in front of them, so I just wanna kinda just go over that. So the first one up top says the general site plan review requirements. All of those have been checked off, those are all set.
What's that, what?
We go to the next one that says the cover sheet, all those boxes have been checked. The next, we go to existing conditions, um, all of those have been checked. Um, let's see, the demolition plan, all those have been checked. Uh, proposed plan, I do have, um, the second one in that says existing zoning of the property and zoning of all adjacent properties, um, just on C three or C five, and I'll give you a list of all these and stuff. Um, they just didn't have what, um, zone it was in and just that it was waterfront and some other details that need to be on the site plan. The next, oh, go ahead.
Was that something that we went over in your office?
No, these are just things that I've reviewed afterward, so I figured we would go over those and just with them.
A little persecute by civil guy.
Oh. Nope, that's fine. Um, then, let's see, let's go down to the first, second, third, fourth, the fifth one, that it says location of storage area for hazardous substance, including any underground storage tanks. So I guess part of it was answered about what is, um, part of your brownfield. So we'd like maybe the small synopsis or what you have that you've turned in for the brownfield and if you can share with us what the brownfield part of it is.
I don't have a synopsis of that.
Okay.
I don't do that work, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Joe Antonelli from, um, uh, Michigan Growth Advisors, he does all of that work.
Okay.
Um, he has a lot of that, um, what I can tell you is there were qualified, the seawall was a qualifying thing.
Yeah.
I do know that, um, because of the condition it's in and the mass, um, there was a few other things that were qualifying, um, pieces of the project that.
Okay.
Didn't bring that with me.
There is.
No, that's okay.
But no found hazardous materials.
Wonderful.
No.
It's a clean site.
It's a clean site, the phase one and phase two came back clean.
Wonderful.
I didn't have one and two because of being on the waterfront and for Eagle.
Oh, right, yeah.
So phase one and two are done and those are clean.
And brownfield, misnomer, brownfield used to say we had a gas station or laundry.
Right.
It doesn't mean that anymore.
Brownfield now, they're looking to help redevelop.
Yes.
And so.
Yes, so that, being at Brownfield to fund is the part of the capital stack.
Yes, correct, and I just, I'm, some of this I'm aware of, but I just wanna make sure my commission understands and even just the public, wonderful, so.
I can tell you when.
Great, so then just after that, yep, then we'll know.
And then I can hand that whole packet to you.
Okay, great.
We're working with Spicer, Michigan Growth Advisors, M E D C and, um, you're a little person, I forget who she is.
Okay.
I forget her name.
Okay.
Anyways, um, who works with M E D C as well. So we have everybody involved in all hands, meeting the next Tuesday.
Okay, great. So then we can go on to, um, the next one. It would say, um, proposed site plan. So you did talk about, I had number one, two, three, four, the fifth one down. Extent of any outdoor sales or display areas or service areas, so you had just explained all of that. That was just one of my questions and I had it to them. You'll do that in your second, third or fourth phase, just let us know with that, great. Now it says the next one is site plan details sheet. The only thing I just did not see and it's minor, but, um, trash receptacles or where the dumpster would be, you'd need a dumpster permit when that happens, so I didn't see that on the site plan, so that's just one thing. And like I said, I've already got a list, so I'll give it to you. So, great, and then, um, all of.
We did talk about that one and I forgot to ask Spicer to put that on the plans.
Oh, yep, exactly. And then lastly, um, like all of your mechanical equipment and everything for the building, is it gonna be on top of your building or is it gonna be on the side? I wasn't sure with the plans when I reviewed them.
Planning on for the, the makeup air unit for the kitchen to be on the rooftop.
Okay.
There may be a couple condensing, condensing units on the ground next to the building for air conditioning.
Okay, great.
So.
Right.
Great.
But otherwise it's rooftop equipment.
Okay, and then, um, let's see, we already talked about wetlands. Let's see, so on the next one where it says grading and landscaping plan, the second to the last where it says, um, planting details, we would just like to know the specific names of the plants that you do decide to put in there and the specific names of the trees and also of the shrubs. That was just kind of a recommendation because we do have those committees, the tree commission and everything here, so.
Whatever your recommendation is, we're just gonna, we're not gonna fight about trees.
Right, right, exactly.
I'm gonna give them a number one pot I've invited you that I found.
There's a lot of them, yeah. Or it's whatever's on his farm, right? Whatever he wants to sell.
We talked about some potted plants out on the deck. Between where the people sit and where, you know, the waterway is, some, some kind of small lower potted plants out there to make it look nice. Um, but we'll be doing regular, I mean, there's a lot of planting wrong on that.
Yes.
But we can be specifics. I don't think we've really dialed down yet.
Far into it, yes.
Bring the landscaper on because you're gonna have to wonder, it's on the civil drawings, but if you want the initial.
Sure.
Bring the landscaper on.
Yeah.
What I typically do is, as I ask them, okay, what's the cost of effective? Minimal maintenance is possible to look the best, if they can, I don't try to say on a landscaper.
Well, and then also you had said Eagle is, you know, having, exactly what. Yep, what they want, because you have to do above and beyond, yeah, but it is.
I mean, they really have, it's been part of the whole of this.
Yeah.
Why do I really wanna?
Yeah.
Because it's very expensive, I mean, we're talking half a million dollars just to fix this water.
Yeah. So then, um, just some last things, um, we did receive a complaint, I believe it was yesterday or the day before, I don't know if Toby can help out a little bit on that. Um, there was a complaint about the docks, yeah. Could you come up for a second, Toby, if you don't mind sharing with that?
Can you do anything with it?
Right, right, but just so you're aware.
Yep, I was just called out there for dock exit floating away into the waterway. And, um, it was rescued by the sheriff's department.
Okay.
At the time and was brought to shore, but I was out there today and did look at them and they are in dire need, so they do need to be addressed as quick as possible.
Well, you could give me the permit and I'll have you to get out there myself and pull the things, but I can't do anything on that waterfront until I've got that permit handy or I'm getting arrested.
Let me, let me chase down, I've been, I've been picking up, trying to call it on record myself because it wasn't happening.
Yeah.
I'll try tomorrow, I'll try next week. Fully understand, especially when there's boat traffic, she's a voter, nobody wants to.
I don't wanna run into that.
Right.
Possibly it could be made a, you know, on your list of things that have to be completed before it moves out because those docks do need to be removed.
Right, yep.
Well, we can't complete them without a permit to do construction. So if you can give us the permit to do construction, we'll happily remove the docks.
Right, well, and I could even try to call, I do have a few connections in Eagle, but, you know, maybe just. Army Corps, oh.
As Army Corps of Engineers.
Okay.
Give me, you know, by next week, midweek here, I'll figure out something here. Whether I talk, I'll talk with you, um, let's see, come up with a plan of action.
Cause they don't even want us driving on that saw to be able to get out there to pull something.
Right.
We were told, mm-mm, can't even go out there and drive on that to pull those docks. Or I would've done it a year ago because I've been worried about that.
But maybe something, let me, let me look into it a little bit. So everybody, everybody's covered and everybody's controlled.
Right, well, and again, I.
When you're out there trying to catch that, you know, forty year salmon.
It's a lot of serious accidents.
Well, I don't want one.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I would love to get them out of there, I don't like looking at it. Every time I go to the piece of property, I'm like, can we get these out? You can't, it's the waterway, you cannot dig into it. Cause they have to be dug out, some of them. We have to bring in a barge and it has to be, they have to be dug out.
Right, well, and I'm just bringing it to your attention just because it was us and just so you're aware, so.
Trying.
Now, now, that's, that's one of the first. Isn't that, isn't that what I'm supposed to say?
Trying for a year and a half to get this permit.
Uh, so the next on my list was, um, just the awareness of the easement. That, I don't know if you were planning on having parking on there, just that we need to know something from the neighboring, whoever uses the easement, is it the boat? Because in the plan, I thought that I saw that the parking was gonna be on easement or, okay.
It is, but when I talked to Spicer, that driveline, so the parking is on the paved area, but we're gonna make that driveline on, and that's.
Oh, in the center through, okay, great. Okay.
We were in that meeting, she came in, was bringing all that.
Yep, Molly, yep, this, that's her, exactly.
So that could still give us that driveline easement.
Great, great, just wanna make sure that you talk with them and are on that. Um, I need a copy of the Eagle permit, um, you're gonna get me that. The next thing. You'll, we'll have to come back for approval for the next phases, you're probably already aware of that. And then, do you plan on putting any signs up or anything like that? Once you're to that phase or when you do decide to put that up, just see me about those, because signs has always been a real big, yep, issue and everything, so. That was it on my list, I don't know if you guys had. That was it on my list, I don't know if you guys had anything else that came to mind, or anything else that you wanted me to ask, so.
Someone asked about, just so I can bring the big sign that's there, I can't do anything about it, it's a hundred year lease or something like that.
Oh.
Billboard.
Billboard, right, okay.
I would love to.
We looked at that, because we wanted to get rid of it, because when that becomes a whole park like setting.
Right.
Bridget, you own lamps, you don't own the sign.
Yeah.
So that's how that goes.
Well, we appreciate it, thank you.
No, we looked into it, because we'd like to at least move it to one end or the other.
Right.
And maybe there's some negotiation.
There might be with Lamar to move it.
Yeah, it might expand.
Yes, yeah. Well, we appreciate all your time, thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
Thank you all of you.
Yes.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for coming, good luck.
Thank you.
So Teresa, on this.
What do I?
Do we need, do we need discussion motions, what are we doing?
Just some quick discussions, a couple things if anybody noticed about chapter two or chapter three for the master plan.
On.
Oh, I'm sorry.
On Lakeside Social.
Oh, Lakeside Social.
No.
Um, do you want to?
This is just a review?
The list that I. I believe so, then we can put together next meeting what the exact conditions are, and agree on those, and I'll have the list to you, and I can put that in your packet.
All right.
And then that way we can eliminate or add to it then, and then we should be outside.
Okay, very good.
Yep, sounds good.
All right.
So you'll get that from them before the next meeting?
Yep.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Brownfield on Tuesday.
Yep, exactly, so that'll be helpful.
A lot of homework to do.
Yes.
That's fine, great.
Yep.
All right.
Keep you busy.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Yeah, thank you for that.
All right, we'll move to the master plan.
Yeah.
So we have chapter two, and chapter three, Williams and Works has been very, very busy with that, and I guess my first thought when I look at both of these chapters is, I like how clean it is, and everything's not scrunch together, it's very easy to read, it flows very happy. One of the points I wanted to point out was on housing underneath that page four, when they have that pie chart or the wheel, that's actually showing us and giving us the visualization of the housing, and also like what Bridget talked about with the housing, just really brought it to the attention, so I really thought that was a great impact that they had in there, and I think that they should use that in other areas, so I've just suggested that, that they'd use that in some of their other areas and pointing out, so I like that. I'm a real visual, so I like that.
So with the master plan, Williams and Works will be here next.
Yes, next month.
Next month.
Yep.
Okay, so then we can really get into this.
Yeah, you can really dive into it now, and if there's anything right away you want to see changed, that they can revise by next month, or you can always email me or call me.
Sure.
And we could talk about that, anything that you see that are a misprint, or you question, or we don't like, but, yeah.
I know, I have, going through this, you know, looking at the age composition, change in meeting, meeting age, just doing some quick calculations, or Google searches anyway.
Right.
Our neighbors to the south, Luddington, they're at 2022, they're at forty-two-point-three median age. Cadillac to the east is thirty-nine-point-nine, the same year of 2022, and I think we're at forty-six?
Forty-six-point-nine, almost forty-seven.
Forty-six-point-nine, so we are, our community's getting older, so we have to do a better job of attracting young people. We can see that in our schools with graduation rates now.
Right.
Eighty-eight graduates from Manistee High, that's shameful. MCC, I think they did six to ten, you know, of course they're not longer, but.
Yeah, there you go.
And the surrounding schools too are down, so, yeah, we have our work cut out for us.
Yeah.
So, okay, you know, and our population also, Luddington has basically seventy-seven-hundred people as of 2022, Cadillac at thousand-five-hundred in the city, and we're at sixty-two, and the projections are to, in the next two decades, to lose population, which is very scary.
Mm-hmm.
Very scary. Okay, but we can cross that bridge with them, I want to know.
Okay.
How everything's figured out. And the other thing is, watching the news the other morning, they had a small segment on about corporations buying houses, they rent them out, you know, and of course, other than the bigger cities, Detroit, Cleveland, Midwest City, Chicago and things, but, and I guess I could get, find some information on that, but, you know, are corporations stepping up in Manistee, in buying houses in Manistee, which is a shame.
Yes.
We need, we need single-family homes, not condos, so. Just a few things that I saw, not diving in to you at a hundred-and-fifty percent, but, but I will.
Uh-huh.
So, anybody else? Sorry for taking majority of time there, but anybody else?
I'm, I'm hoping that investments in housing is going to skew some of these, and they're going to have to go back to the drawing board on some of those.
Yeah.
Marco, do I have a question?
Oh, go ahead.
Now, under, under, page six, under income, I've been reading in it, I just confused. In, under income, it says in 2022, the medium income of the city of Manistee was estimated at fifty-seven thousand, a substantial rise from thirty thousand in the year 2000.
Mm-hmm.
You mean in two years, the medium income went up twenty-seven thousand dollars in Manistee?
Two years, twenty-two years.
Twenty-two years. Twenty-two years.
Twenty-two years, okay, in twenty-two, 2022, okay, maybe that's right, all right, maybe I'm confusing.
Cigarettes were fifty cents a pack twenty-two years ago.
Yeah, oh, yes, you're right.
Now they're seven dollars.
Yeah, you're right, you're right, I'm done, thanks.
It's okay.
Yeah, it's over.
Anything, Joey?
I'm done, thank you.
No, I, I do this for a living, so.
Okay. Marlene?
No question.
Anything? Robert?
I spent more plan looking at the, than I did this.
Okay, all right. Nick?
Sure.
Okay. Anything else, Teresa, on this?
Nope, I'm outside.
Okay, no, it's good stuff, a lot of good information.
Yeah, yeah.
So with the master plan, I should know this, but I don't right now, but city council, who all gets this plan?
Probably all of them.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll be in their packet, and then they'll vote on it, and, yeah.
All right.
Okay, very good, so we can move on?
Yep, go ahead.
Public comments and communication at this time, is there anyone in the audience that has anything? Please come to the podium, name and address.
Hi.
Hello.
I'm Sarah Harless, I'm Roger's daughter, and I just want to thank you guys for recognizing him for his forty years of service, and thank you to Teresa and Kelso, but I just want to say a few words about his time on the planning commission. If you know my dad, you know he's a storyteller, so I've grown up listening to my dad's stories about many things, including his time on the planning commission, and if you ask him about, Dad, what about this, or what about that, he'll sit and tell you the story of it. So his life started soon after high school, when he was drafted, of service, started soon after high school, when he was drafted to Vietnam in March of nineteen-sixty-eight. The military was not in his sights when leaving high school, he worked at Hardy Salt, like you said. After graduate, the day after he graduated high school, he went to start to work at Hardy Salt in nineteen-sixty-six, but his lottery number was chosen, and he served his country proudly. He saw active combat when driving a tank in North Vietnam before being discharged in February of nineteen-seventy. He considers it his pleasure to have served his country and defend the freedoms that we enjoy today. After being discharged from the army, he continued working at Hardy Salt for twenty-two years, before going to PCA for twenty-two more years, and during that time, he also served in the Naval Reserve out of Cadillac, Michigan. When he got home from Vietnam, he married his high school sweetheart Cathy, who ultimately was the one to encourage him to become part of the planning commission.
Sure did.
In nineteen-eighty-four. His first meeting for the planning commission was not in this building, it was actually in the parking lot across the street, that used to be the police station. He describes it as a two-story building that housed the police station on the first floor and a meeting room on the second floor. For most of his time on the commission as chairman, he worked with John Rose and Denise Blakesley from the planning and zoning department, has many great memories of the two of them. Some of his most proud and maybe most controversial memories date back to Harbor Village, including the sale of the sand company and moving the Coast Guard Station, the Riverwalk, the casino, the prison, Tondue, and most recently, the Hampton Inn. Making decisions to keep Manistee viable for its citizens is a reason that he's stayed on this commission, he wants young families to be able to raise their families in Manistee as he and my mom did. Like it was mentioned, he has two children, myself and my brother Mike, we both live here in Manistee, and he considers himself fortunate to have us here with him in the city that he helped plan. He might tell you, or he does actually say, that his proudest accomplishment to date on the planning commission was playing matchmaker back in about nineteen-ninety-six with fellow commission member Christie Harless, which eventually led to the marriage of myself and Christie's son Craig, my husband back here. They used to meet after planning commission meetings and talk about us, and they got us together, and here we are, married with three of our own children. My brother Mike is also married, and my dad has five grandchildren that he would do anything for, any day of the week, anytime, and one great-grandchild, and since his retirement, you can usually find him with one of those grandchildren. He actually got his first cellphone when all the Tondue meetings were going on, because I was pregnant with our first child, and he did not want to miss the labor, so he had to get a cellphone in case he needed to leave the meetings. He's, he always says, he has given the years of service for his family to make Manistee a better place, and ultimately, his family means everything to him, as he means everything to us. He's always there for us, he cheers the loudest and is always the proudest, and we're proud of you, Dad, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
He is the godfather. Anyone else?
So it's hard to follow that, but my name's Seth Pratt, 355 Second Street, and I'm the fifth district city council member. I just wanted to thank the planning commission for everything you guys do, I've seen several of you out in public, and I've made that noted to you, but I hear nothing but positive comments from the public, and how willing you guys are to listen to public concerns, so I appreciate that, because it's not always easy, like was said earlier, there's lots of decisions, and there's two sides to every story, and sometimes you try to find that common ground that people can live with, so thank you for that, but I'm really here to thank commission member Yoder for his forty years of service. I had a comment at the end of the city council meeting last night, but you kind of snuck out before, so I just wanted to stop in and thank you. When we really think about it, forty years of dedication and service is a lot, we don't see that very often, so thank you so much, and as your daughter said earlier, I think we see you out and about in the community, you're very active, not just as a planning commission member, and that goes a long ways, but your willingness to listen to concerns and always looking out for the community's best interest is really what makes you stand out as a commission member, so thank you for that.
All right.
So, that was all, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll close that portion, and we will move to staff reports.
So the Michigan Association of Planning, everybody's got their magazine there in front of them, I tried to highlight one or several articles in there, but I do want to have you turn to page five, it's about housing reform in Grand Rapids, and just again, that hot topic of housing, so take that home, and it's some good, interesting reading, so.
Okay.
The next, I had Kelso contact Mary Riley from Michigan State University, the education department, and she said that, regarding the citizen planning classes, she said that, to attend those that were, that are starting in October, that you would need to attend a minimum of just four of the classes to receive the certificate, and then the other two courses you could do on a makeup video, and then we had talked about one of them being on our PC night and stuff like that. She said there's a total of six modules, and each person, each in-person class is approximately three hours long, so it is a little bit lengthy, but she says it goes quickly, it's hands-on, she gives great scenarios, and she would love for you guys to attend that, so just let me know for sure if you want to, and we can do that, we've got the money and the budget for you to do that, so.
Yeah, very good.
Okay, great. So the American Planning Association Conference, I didn't know if Roger wanted to talk a little bit about if he's going to be able to go, they are recognizing Roger there at the conference at the Amway Grand Plaza, they're having a awards ceremony, and are you going to be able to attend, and?
As of right now, we are planning on it.
Okay, all right, great. I'm not attending the conference, I chose a different conference that I'm going to be going to in October, and kind of have to pick and choose, and I am quite busy, so I'm not going to be able to attend that.
Uh-huh.
But I wanted to know that I'm great, I'm glad that you're going to be going and attending, so that's great.
If everything works out right, I will.
All right, sounds good. Next, complaints, last time we had talked about some complaints that had come through, all of those have been resolved, and especially with help from Toby, it's been great having somebody else there that is to support the department, and we've gotten all of those taken care of, so.
Go ahead.
Lastly, the block party, I'm going to be setting up a table for the block party, so look for me, give your two cents about what you want on the, and in the master plan, and we'll do that, and Andrew's been great helping and supporting that from the chamber, and we're going to come up with a table and try to draw some people in to talk about that, so we're going to be going to different events around, I think the other one is Harvest Fest, or Oktoberfest, or whatever they have for the kids.
Booze, brews, and brats?
I don't, are they doing that one?
Uh-uh.
Okay, so, yeah, so I plan on attending some of those, and so look for me, and stop and say hi, so, right, that's all that I have.
All right. Laura, do you have anything?
I do not.
Okay, Kelso? Welcome to your first meeting, doing the minutes?
We'll see how they look.
Good.
Better than we would do.
It's been interesting.
We are.
Yeah.
Well, we'll move to member discussion, we'll go to Roger.
Oh, I would just like to say thanks again for everyone that attended, as far as my regards of the forty years of service, I enjoyed it, I had a good time, and I hope I can do forty more. As far as discussion wise, I understand we sold the, or it's in talks, the hospital